Anne Clark.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act 10:4-6, ed. sec., notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Here.
Councilmember Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Greenman? Mayor LaBrus.
Here. She might be coming. Okay, would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands here, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have some good stuff tonight. We have a couple proclamations and some certificates for our junior Olympic participants and their coaches. I'm gonna start with the two proclamations we have. Recently, there was a motor vehicle accident in Hackensack and on River Street, and the vehicle had overturned and people were in the vehicle, and two of our city workers rushed to their aid and were able, I believe it was a woman and her child, and were able to extricate them from the car. And whenever somebody does anything like this, we feel it's right to recognize them and give them their kudos for doing the right thing. So would James Morell, please stand? You here? Come on up, James. The other one is Mario Palais, please come up.
Thank you. I'm gonna do, the proclamations are the same except for the names, so I'm gonna do them both at the same time, if that's all right with you, gentlemen. How are ya?
Good.
Thanks again for doing that, that was awesome. Thank you. Whereas on Wednesday, August 27, 2014, a motor vehicle accident occurred on River Street in the city of Hackensack, which resulted in an overturned vehicle. And whereas Jay Morell and Mario Palais, who were working at Johnson Park at the time of the accident, both responded to the accident scene. And whereas Mr. Morell and Mr. Palais assisted Marion Mosega and her infant son, who were the occupants of the overturned vehicle, to safety. And where, whereas the quick actions of these gentlemen for all involved in this motor vehicle accident proved to be heroic. And now therefore I, John P. LaBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the city council, do hereby commend these two gentlemen for their quick thinking and professionalism in this emergent situation. Guys, thank you so much. God knows what you guys did.
Can we shake their hand? John, have him shake his hand.
Mario.
Fred!
Guys, council would like to shake your hands, also. All right.
You never know, you know?
Thanks again. Good work. Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mario. I just wanna say that I am in the part maybe ninety percent of the time, and Mario is one of the guys that always take care of the soccer field and the ball. Always keeping nice and clean, right, Mario?
Okay, with the council, what? What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call out the participant's name, children's name, you'll come up, and the council will hand out your certificates to you. All right? All right, so you hand them out, and you guys line up behind them, and we'll do the handshake. And coaches, help me out. If somebody's not here, let me know, all right, so we can put that one to the side. Alan Hilton Clark. Nice job. Look at that. Good job. Marcus Donigan. Tell if the comet's gonna be real good in high school pretty soon. Nice job, Marcus, thanks. Marquis Donigan. Brothers? Twins? Nice. Job. Mekki Walker. Curtis Whiting. Curtis not here? Not here? I caught it through on the side. Damir Tony. Nice job, Damir. Jeremy Torre. Justin Torre. Ryan Peña. Anthony Moran. Not here? Okay. Where are we? Brandon Hospy. Is it Malachi or Maliki? Malachi Burel? Malachi?
Maliki.
Maliki. Maliki Burel's not here. Okay. Whitney Bledsoe-Fur. Nice job. Thank you.
This is Curtis.
Oh, Mr. Curtis is here.
No, Curtis, no.
Mom here? Dad here? Who's here?
Grandparents?
Sir, how are you, Curtis? Where's the last one before that? Whitney?
Whitney.
Amaya Oliver. Maya? Maya. Good job, Amaya. Larissa Itondo. Great job. Thank you. Sidney Dungy. Good job, Sidney. Olivia Burel. Good job. Riley Petway. Nice job. Danasia Tony. Danasia. Look at me with the names, guys. Nice job, Danasia, thank you. Dylan Dow. Lareek Reyes. Jordan Lockwood. Taleya Witherspoon. Selah Dungy? Dungy? And Sage Nicholson. Is there anybody here who we did not call?
William.
William? Clerk? Who's the clerk?
Are you close?
My, my.
All right. William, we're gonna have to, come on up, William.
Come on up, we're shaking hands.
Great job. Couldn't get you your certificate.
Congratulations.
All right, coaches. First, I'd say something to the kids. Guys?
There's someone else here.
Oh, there's another one?
Amir Shelley.
Amir Shelley. All right, we got two. I'm just gonna get you your certificate.
We'll owe you one.
Thank you. That's it?
We're gonna make one.
We got everybody?
Guys and girls, without your coaches, none of this is possible.
They donate and volunteer their time, all right? You have three people on this council who coached for twenty, thirty years, and it's great to see young people like you being successful, winning medals, doing the right thing, and I want to thank the coaches especially, because volunteerism is what it's all about. Without volunteerism and putting the time in, I always say that youth sports are probably our best form of crime prevention, keeping kids off the streets, doing the right things, keeping them focused, all right, keeping them, you know, focused on their schoolwork and their athletics. So I'm gonna call the coaches up, and I want everybody to give them a round of applause. Paul York. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Michelle Hammond Dudley. Stanley Finney. Zoraida Hernandez. Thank you, coach. Appreciate your time. Thomas Tony. Mark Scully. Not here? Danetta Tony. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you. The couple of athletes who didn't get their certificates, I'll see that the clerk can get them to you ASAP. All right, you have their names? They're on here, the two?
No, I'll get it down.
All right. Thank you. Sorry for the oversight.
Sorry.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. What do we have? Something telling me our high school track team's gonna be looking pretty good in a few years. Old comments in here, I hope? Yep. Blue and gold, guys, blue and gold, remember. Stay home. We want to wish you the best of luck and congratulations on doing this. Look forward to seeing you guys as you get older, competing and moving forward in all your endeavors. Remember, schoolwork first, all right? Family and sports, all right? Thank you so much for coming tonight, we appreciate everybody, thank you. Moving on. Busy night. Madam Clerk, approval in minutes?
Okay, these are the minutes from the special meeting on June 26, 2014. We need a motion.
Have a motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman, you were absent on the day of the meeting. Okay? And Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, the city did receive their Emergency Operations Center grant for $300,000. I wanted to thank Albert Gibb for assisting with Lot C. Thanks to him, he cut down the timeframe. We had issues with Tidlens there and trying to acquire Tidal, which would have probably taken about two years, and being the historian he is, he found the information down in the archives, which was of great assistance. Garbage collection, as of October, the week of October 6, will start a once-a-week collection, so we'll go back to the way it was at the beginning of the year, before twice a week. The intersection of Reeland and Hudson, we, the information went to Sergeant Natale in traffic, we're still waiting a response from the state regarding that left turn only for trucks. In Sarah supermarkets, we have actually tomorrow, Wednesday, the 17th, at 5:30 at Hackensack Shoprite, the Help Bag Hunger Event. Next Saturday, September 27, the Main Street Festival is on. Ninety-four State Street update, it's scheduled for completion the summer of 2015. That's an eighty-six one-bedroom, one-hundred-and-thirty-six two-bedroom on five floors, over parking on State Street. Whole-street parking. The ordinance is being amended next meeting, keeping street cleaning in effect for both sides of the street, lifting the parking restriction. We were notified the sidewalks by the M&amp;M Building were in need of repair. I think someone had fallen. Our project manager went out, we're getting prices currently to see how we can affect a repair or replacement of the sidewalks. Liability insurance, I spoke to Otterstead, and I think that was what we had discussed. It was a three-year contract, which is up, actually, December 2014. We are currently looking for better options for our liability insurance. We did, we're passing a resolution for the professionals, the prosecutor and public defender, that they will be paid by voucher and be on a one-year contract. Leaf collection starts October 13, that is in the recycling calendar, and also on the website gives a detail of exactly what area we'll be in at what particular time, and I would ask the CFO to give us some information on the 2015 reassessment.
Yeah, you'll recall that a part of the tax appeal plan was for us to do a full revaluation in 2015, followed subsequent reassessments. We went out for RFP on the revale, and the proposals came in. Both proposals required us to have updated tax maps, which we don't have, and quite frankly, we can't wait to update our tax maps. So we modified the plan. What we'll do now is we're gonna be going out for new RFPs. We're gonna do a 100% reassessment where, with 100% inspections, interior and exterior. That'll be in the first year. In years two through five, we'll do partial reassessments, same plan that we had, and we'll re-inspect 25% of the properties, okay? So at the end of five years, we'll have re-inspected everybody. It's the, it accomplishes the exact same goals of the original plan, okay? Does it a little bit more expeditiously. At the same time, we'll be undertaking a project to get our tax maps updated, so that at the conclusion of this five-year plan, then we can go and do our full revale. In order to do this, we had to get permission of the state, okay? We received that permission last week, so new RFPs will probably be going out before the end of this month. Everything is proceeding, you know, pretty much along the original lines.
Very good. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Resolution 328-14.
This is final adoption of ordinance number 28-2014, an ordinance providing for various parking utility improvements in, of, and by the city of Hackensack, in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, appropriating $434,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $434,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman, you were absent on the day of the meeting. Okay? And Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, the city did receive their Emergency Operations Center grant for $300,000. I wanted to thank Albert Gibb for assisting with Lot C. Thanks to him, he cut down the timeframe. We had issues with Tidlens there and trying to acquire Tidal, which would have probably taken about two years, and being the historian he is, he found the information down in the archives, which was of great assistance. Garbage collection, as of October, the week of October 6, will start a once-a-week collection, so we'll go back to the way it was at the beginning of the year, before twice a week. The intersection of Reeland and Hudson, we, the information went to Sergeant Natale in traffic, we're still waiting a response from the state regarding that left turn only for trucks. In Sarah supermarkets, we have actually tomorrow, Wednesday, the 17th, at 5:30 at Hackensack Shoprite, the Help Bag Hunger Event. Next Saturday, September 27, the Main Street Festival is on. Ninety-four State Street update, it's scheduled for completion the summer of 2015. That's an eighty-six one-bedroom, one-hundred-and-thirty-six two-bedroom on five floors, over parking on State Street. Whole-street parking. The ordinance is being amended next meeting, keeping street cleaning in effect for both sides of the street, lifting the parking restriction. We were notified the sidewalks by the M&amp;M Building were in need of repair. I think someone had fallen. Our project manager went out, we're getting prices currently to see how we can affect a repair or replacement of the sidewalks. Liability insurance, I spoke to Otterstead, and I think that was what we had discussed. It was a three-year contract, which is up, actually, December 2014. We are currently looking for better options for our liability insurance. We did, we're passing a resolution for the professionals, the prosecutor and public defender, that they will be paid by voucher and be on a one-year contract. Leaf collection starts October 13, that is in the recycling calendar, and also on the website gives a detail of exactly what area we'll be in at what particular time, and I would ask the CFO to give us some information on the 2015 reassessment.
Yeah, you'll recall that a part of the tax appeal plan was for us to do a full revaluation in 2015, followed subsequent reassessments. We went out for RFP on the revale, and the proposals came in. Both proposals required us to have updated tax maps, which we don't have, and quite frankly, we can't wait to update our tax maps. So we modified the plan. What we'll do now is we're gonna be going out for new RFPs. We're gonna do a 100% reassessment where, with 100% inspections, interior and exterior. That'll be in the first year. In years two through five, we'll do partial reassessments, same plan that we had, and we'll re-inspect 25% of the properties, okay? So at the end of five years, we'll have re-inspected everybody. It's the, it accomplishes the exact same goals of the original plan, okay? Does it a little bit more expeditiously. At the same time, we'll be undertaking a project to get our tax maps updated, so that at the conclusion of this five-year plan, then we can go and do our full revale. In order to do this, we had to get permission of the state, okay? We received that permission last week, so new RFPs will probably be going out before the end of this month. Everything is proceeding, you know, pretty much along the original lines.
Very good. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Resolution 328-14.
This is final adoption of ordinance number 28-2014, an ordinance providing for various parking utility improvements in, of, and by the city of Hackensack, in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, appropriating $434,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $434,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now you need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 28-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 329-14.
329-14 is a final adoption of ordinance number 29-2014, capital ordinance of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance for the improvement of Columbus Park and appropriating $65,000 and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the general capital improvement fund of the city of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion, open to the public, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now is the time for the public to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now you need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 28-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 329-14.
329-14 is a final adoption of ordinance number 29-2014, capital ordinance of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance for the improvement of Columbus Park and appropriating $65,000 and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the general capital improvement fund of the city of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion, open to the public, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now we need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 29-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, Resolution 330-14.
Is a final adoption ordinance number 30-2014, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements by and in the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, appropriating $433,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $411,350,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion, open to the public, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now is the time for the public to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Anybody who would like to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, motion to close?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now we need a motion to adopt.
Need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 30-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay. Resolution 331-14. I just want to check one thing here, I'm looking at the, in the bold, where it says 540 underneath, it's 513. Is that missing a zero?
Yes, it is. Five hundred thirteen thousand.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Just, for the record, make sure that's 513,000.
Okay.
All right?
Sorry. Hi, Bo. This is a final adoption of ordinance number 31-2014. It's a bond ordinance providing for improvements in connection with the city's combined sewer overflow improvement project by and in the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, appropriating $540,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $513,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. Just to let you know, Mayor, it is correct in the actual ordinance.
Correct. I see it over here. Yes.
This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Now is the time for the public to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Anybody who would like to speak on this ordinance, please step forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Could you please explain exactly what this ordinance, oh, excuse me, Vito Burnett ninety-nine Cedar Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey? And I guess I'm just asking, what exactly does it mean when you're going to improve the sewer overflow?
I'll leave that to the city manager. I mean, it's, this is about, we have a combined sewer system in our, in our city.
If I could, Mayor, this is for a particular section of the combined sewer overflow and what this grant, what this ordinance does, it appropriates money for the televising first of the line, okay? Once the line's been televised, then it can be expanded and improved. I don't have the details, and to be honest, I completely, I forget which section of the combined sewer.
I think that's phase one. That would be Passaic Street, River Street.
I'm not, yeah, and that's the thing, I forget exactly which section it is, okay? It's, we have a grant for two hundred and ninety-one thousand.
And I understand, I mean, I read, it talks about televising and said, but what exactly does it mean sewer overflow improvement? What exactly are you looking for?
Well, you understand, the city has a combined, a combined sewer, okay?
When you say combined, you talking about with the water supply? I mean, it's separate from the water supply?
Well, there's sections of the sewer, you know, where the sanitary sewer is connected and it shares the line with the sanitary line, okay? Well, I'm sorry. The stormwater and the sanitary line.
Or combined.
Yeah.
We're separating them out.
Yeah. We'll be doing an ordinance later on this year, you know, to fully separate the two, okay? But this is related to a particular section, okay? And it's a small component of a much bigger project that's still to come.
Four phases.
Yes.
It should be four phases.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judy.
Anybody else like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only?
Sent an email about an hour.
Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt this ordinance.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number thirty-one dash two thousand and fourteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, resolution three thirty-two dash fourteen.
Is a final adoption of ordinance number thirty-two dash two thousand and fourteen, a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance for the improvement of Pulaski Park and appropriating a hundred and seventy thousand dollars and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the General Capital Improvement Fund of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Now time for the public to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Anybody who would like to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Now we need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt ordinance three thirty-two dash fourteen.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number thirty-two dash two thousand and fourteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, resolution three thirty-three dash fourteen.
This is a final adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash two thousand and fourteen, a refunding bond ordinance of the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, providing for the payment of amounts owing to others for taxes levied in the city appropriating eight million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed eight million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars aggregate principal amount of bonds or notes of the city for financing the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Now is the time for the public to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Anybody who would like to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Motion to accept the bond.
Adopt. Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution three thirty-four dash fourteen. This is an introduction of ordinance number thirty-three dash two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance authorizing and approving the City of Hackensack's vacation of a portion of the public rights of way identified as Jefferson Street and authorizing the transfer of the city's property interest and same to the County of Bergen. We need a motion?
Motion to introduce.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance thirty-three dash two thousand and fourteen as introduced is now passed on first reading and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen at eight o'clock P.M. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction or passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, thank you. Resolution three thirty-five dash fourteen.
This is the introduction of ordinance number thirty-five dash two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance amending chapter fourteen entitled Court of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Article Two entitled City Prosecutor, Section Nine entitled Establishment of Office, Article Three entitled Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, Section Thirteen entitled Terms of Office Compensation, and Article Four entitled Public Defender, Section Sixteen entitled Terms of Office Compensation.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance thirty-five dash two thousand and fourteen as introduced is now passed on first reading and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October seventh, two thousand and fourteen at eight o'clock P.M. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Resolution three thirty-six dash fourteen.
This is a resolution appointing David R. Trost as city manager.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
I stand, I stand. Sorry.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Resolution number three thirty-seven dash fourteen.
That was the resolution that was being pulled this evening?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was reading through. Resolution three thirty-eight dash fourteen.
This is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to enter into an agreement with the Hackensack Public School District regarding the provision of a school resource officer.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Rose, could you second?
Can you second that, Rose?
No, I didn't say anything.
No, can you second?
Oh, yeah, second.
Thank you. Roll call is completed.
No, we still need to do the roll call. We have the intro with Deputy Mayor Canastrino and a second by Councilwoman Greenman.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Stand.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
I'm standing.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution three thirty-nine dash fourteen. Is a resolution authorizing a refund for junior cheerleading registration.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution three forty dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution three forty-one dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to convert low charges to property liens.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution three forty-two dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a rights-of-way use agreement with T.W. Telcom of New Jersey LP.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution three forty-three dash fourteen.
Is a resolution to amend Resolution two ninety dash fourteen renewal of the liquor license zero-two-two-three dash four-four dash zero-four-six dash zero-zero-eight.
Motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution three forty-four dash fourteen.
Is a resolution awarding state contract for eight police vehicles to Winner Ford.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution three forty-five dash fourteen.
Is a resolution awarding state contract for four police vehicles to Day Ford, Inc.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution three forty-six dash fourteen.
Is a resolution awarding state contract for four police vehicles to Carmen Jeep Dodge.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Resolution three forty-seven dash fourteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to enter into an agreement with New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, Office of Clean Energy through two thousand and fourteen for direct install program.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And resolution three forty-eight fourteen to pay the bills.
Is a resolution to pay the bills. Current fund has eight million three hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-nine cents. Brand's is seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. Payroll is one million six hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Public parking system is two thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Capital, four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Escrow, fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Trust account is a hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and five dollars and seventy-four cents. Total expenditures, ten million two hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Inter funds and transfers, two hundred and forty-six thousand ninety-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
May I have a motion to accept the bills, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Second.
Thank you.
You can second if you did now.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
At this time, it's time to open to the public. May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Oh.
Yes.
Second. Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBross.
Aye. Now, before we open, before I let the public come up, I'd like to bring up Mr. Trost, our new city manager. Would you please come up, please? Mr. David Trost, welcome you. Would you like to say a few words?
Does that move? Reach? It's going the other side.
That's right. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the council, appreciate your confidence in me to help lead this city along with you, and I'd like to thank the residents and the staff, and I look forward to working with each one of you because I believe that local government is the best way to serve and to give government to the people. I am always available, I'm willing to listen. My number-one task is to listen. And as I serve, especially in the next three months, I ask for your patience. There's a transition period that has to occur, and for me to get up to date, and I'm going to depend on the staff here in Hackensack and more importantly, the council, so that we can establish next year's budget and a long process or a great process of making Hackensack a great place to live, especially with some of the redevelopment projects. I'm very excited about that. I can't wait to get going. And thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And quickly, I would like to, at this time, give Mr. Costa a big, big, big thank you for his role here. He stepped into a role which, you know, was quite a hot potato when you grabbed onto it, and from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate it. You've done a good job, and I do appreciate that. Anybody else in the council like to speak to Art?
Well, the only thing I can say that I thank you after all your work. I see you every morning by my house coming to work. I say hello to you every morning. And you may be surprised that sometimes, you know, things happen in the city and sometimes you have to handle it. You had the hard seat for a while. So, thank you, sir, for everything you did for us.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, you know, over and over. We appreciate all that you've done, and wearing three, four, five hats some days. I know it could not have been easy, but your role in the city continues, and it's still a very, very important one. And I'm sure you're going to work very closely with our new city manager and continue to make the city better and better every day. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank you from below my heart for all the knowledge that you've given me, and I'm going to miss you up here with DPW, Sanitation, James, their leader back. Thanks, there.
Miss Greenman?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come up, give your name and address to the clerk.
I also would like to thank Mr. Costa. His true colors were shown. At the worst possible time, he stepped up. I think he did a, he really did a good job.
Thank you.
Things don't always go the way you like them to go. You have to give Mr. Trost, I guess, an opportunity. It is what it is. I'd just like to add is a couple of questions I have. Are garbage services going back to once a week?
In October.
Yes, for the winter. That I thank you for sincerely. I had heard initially that it wouldn't, but I think it's a, it's a great idea. I'd also like to say, I had occasion to visit a few parks in the city. We have a lot to be proud of in the city. The town is really, it's getting there. It's looking good. The parks truly look good. I think, Mayor, you have to stress what the council's position is as far as operations in the city. I think it's outrageous, the interference that the parks personnel are getting. I know it's a matter, I've never talked about it, but it's, it's just not right. You know, to put it, compare it to something, if you had a raging fire on Main Street, none of you would push the fire chief aside and try to tell them how to fight the fire, no more than you'd push a cop aside to, to, you know, help with a hostage situation. The council does not belong on the fields and directing city personnel. That's what a city manager's for. That's what department heads are for. Nobody, Mayor, was more involved in sports and recreation than you were. I never heard of you doing anything like that. Mayor Melfi, very much involved in the sports program with you. I've never heard of him doing that. Some of the stories that are coming out are just, they're terrible, and it's going to cause a labor problem. We're going to be back in problems again. We need to stop these problems. So many of these issues are avoidable. We have to address them early, and I'm just urging you. Mr. Costa, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Governor. Ma'am, how are you?
Good evening. Peace and blessings to everyone. I, too, would like to thank Art. Art gets a lot of calls from me ever since he's been in that position because I'm harping on that multicultural center. I'm not going to stop. So, Art has given me a lot of information, and I hope that you will pass it on, Art, to the new city manager. I, too, thank you for taking my calls and returning my calls. You didn't return it today, though, but I knew why. I knew why. You know where another project goes. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
To the council. I have been here for several, several weeks. I've brought my children here, my young children here, and the behaviors have been so outrageous. I didn't bring them tonight. I wish I would have because everything looks cool, calm, and collective here tonight. So, I just want to say to the council, I know there's been a lot of mistakes. As a liaison in the city, I hear a lot of things, you know, a lot of hearsay things, but I think you can work together. I think we can move forward. We have to think positive because if we don't show that to our children and our generations coming up, we're not going to have a successful Hackensack, New Jersey. So, I'm just saying, if everyone could try to work together, we may not like each other that much. I mean, I don't have a problem with you guys. I still have a good affair with you guys, but we need to tone it down, calm it down, so we don't have these reflections with our children. My main priority here tonight is to give you an update on recreation, which is definitely moving forward. As you know, our football teams have won all games. We have a game on the 19th with Hoboken, and we're hoping that everyone will come to support that. Cheerleading is open. These flyers are all down at the Recreation Department, by the way. The Boy Scout troops are open. Tennis with Mr. Jackson is moving along nicely. They have set rules down at Johnson Park. Mr. Jackson has, he always has his permits to play down there, so I just wanted everyone to know that because when the public does come down, he has a certain space that he can maintain, but he's, he's a gentleman. If you need more, he will give it to you, but he's down there, he was down there during the summer and paid for his permits and spoke to Pat about his spacing, and everything was clear that he had certain space, and then the public could also come down and do their thing, and he appropriates that space. So, that's with tennis. The Ice, the Ice House and the, and the programs that are sponsored by Recreation, they don't register down there, but they are sponsored, and they do have the flyers down there at the Recreation Department. My pet projects are basketball and senior citizens. I get such a kick out of senior citizens. I could tell you a joke that one told me, but I'm not going to tell you right here in public. Maybe on the side, I'll tell you one day. It's really funny. I enjoy going to the programs. They had a luncheon today at Vanson Park, but it was rained out, so that's going to be rescheduled for Tuesday. We also have our exercise program, which starts for the seniors, which I'm one of those, on Mondays and Wednesdays. The times will change, and I'll give this to Art. So, if you know any seniors that want to come out, it's $2 for the class. We have an experienced exercise teacher, Debbie Rodriguez, and she's been there for a while, and I think she just got a grant to keep the program, program open. So, Kathleen, if your mom can come, if I could bring my mom, I would, but I can't right now. And for all the parents who are senior citizens and to the children, bring your parents out if they can come. They have chairs. Sit down. You don't have to stand up to exercise. I want to move forward with some of the sports. There's going to be, there's going to be registration for basketball, but that's not till, I think that's in October. We're looking forward to a great season. They have put code of conduct rules in place because last year it was really a mess, even for my personal self. They're going to do, you know, the background checks and all of that. They have coaches and everything in place. So, we're looking forward to a very, very successful sports season in all areas of the Recreation Department. Don't let anybody think that Recreation is going down. It's, it's really improving. They have a lot of things in place. It's going to be a little more order, and the whole department down there is doing a wonderful, wonderful job. So, I just wanted to give everybody FYI. I don't know if my minutes are up. I'm going to go sit down now, but I want to thank you, and I also want to thank everyone for your prayers for my mom because, as you know, she's home now, and I thank you all so much.
Thank you, Sis.
Thank you.
Next, please.
I'm Richard Serbo, Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey. And before Mr. Costa leaves, I'd like him to at least agree with me that Spring Valley Avenue is disturbing. You live there, and, I mean, unless you're living in the back of the house or something or what, you know it's disturbing. Those buses are empty. They run 18 hours a day, okay?
They do.
They start at 4:30 in the morning, okay, and they run till, sometimes if they're running late, swinging towards midnight, okay? So, it's disturbing, and I just want you to agree with me.
I agree the buses do go through there, yes.
So, Spring Valley Avenue is disturbing.
It's a busy, busy street.
Thank you very much.
It's a busy street.
All right. So, tonight, I just want to bring up some old stuff that I've mentioned here before, and then some new ideas that I'm on my way, okay? So, old stuff, I want to, the first, of course, is Spring Valley Avenue is the first thing I mentioned when I came here. The litter in town is, is an eyesore. It's just everywhere, okay? Look around, all right? As for contributions by, I'm going to just rattle these off. It's just my old grief, my old grievances. And contributions from the hospital, have you followed up on that? What about the county, all the buildings they have? Are they contributing more to us? What about the communities north of Route 4 that you said you had an idea in your last administration to have them contribute to the county seat to help us with our tax rolls? It's, these are things I never got any answers on, so I mention them again, that's all, okay? What else? Everything. How about grants from the developers? Are there going to be grants? Are they building low and middle-income housing along with the luxury condos in town? I mean, I don't know where to, where to, where to stop here. Let's, let's go right to some, how about some new ideas, okay, for Hackensack? How about, you know, with the coming fall season and spending millions on picking up leaves again, why not really get some developers together to build a little biofuel plant, have everyone bring their leaves here, and we can make fuel and run our cars with it? I mean, you could, you could run the fleet in Hackensack on biofuel. That's an idea. What about, what about consolidating the high school and just cutting it down to just a couple of years instead of four years or three years? I mean, people that are going to go on to study higher education are going to go anyway, and the kids that aren't really interested in education are done by the time they're in 10th or 11th, 10th grade anyway, 9th sometimes. So, you know, we could actually cut out grades in the high school to consolidate education, make it more compact, okay? Also, what about, you know, adding a little flair to Hackensack and lifting the ban on vendors? Why not allow some vending in Hackensack? Some of them are pretty creative, and it, it might add a little color to Hackensack. And I asked last time about increasing the minutes from 5 to 10. You, you said you might, well, you said nothing, so I don't know if you're going to vote on it or think about it. But, so I, I don't know where to start or, or end because I get no answers about anything. So, I'll just say what I said, which is a repetition of a week passed, and I'll leave it at that. So, maybe someday we'll get some answers. And thank you, Mr. Costa, and I wish you well.
Thank you, Mr. Serbo.
Thank you, Mr. Serbo.
Paul? Hi, Mayor and Council.
Don't worry.
Good evening. My name is Paul in Calcaterra. I'm a resident of the First Ward, and I live next to the Cultural Center. And before I get into that, I just want to say that I go down to the park, Columbus Park, two, three times a week, you know, for a walk, and I really, I really like to see, you know, all the people there. It's really nice. We're seeing a cross-section of people, and unfortunately, there's a lot of litter there now. And I know the guys are working towards cleaning it up, like especially Monday. I, as I walk, sometimes I pick things up and then just go over to the garbage and throw it in, and it's not my job, but, you know, it's my park. And I would make a suggestion that maybe we put some kind of signs up there that says, "Do recycling." I'm a recycling freak. Where I teach at Ciarko Center, I've made my students put up recycling signs, garbage separation. There's no signs up there to direct people to anything. We just throw it all in the garbage. And I don't know if it's all separated at any time, but we should have bins that say garbage and recycling. And recycling, we're putting back into the system. Also, too, I think if there is someone involved in issuing the permits, that the people who go down there to play and get the permits, whether they're soccer people or baseball people, should be held accountable to say, "Hey, look, you guys have people here playing. Let's make sure that the place is clean." How do you tell people to clean up? You got to teach them. You got to let them know, just like their kids, "Hey, we don't, we don't want to live like this. This is our park. We want to take care of it. We want the place to be clean." And of course, going down to any place where it's clean, you always feel good. So, I'm going to make a suggestion that maybe you get some signs, you know, or maybe a couple of different litter boxes. One's is garbage, one's is recycling. Who are we doing this for? We're doing it not, not only for ourselves, but for our kids. Our society doesn't do enough to put back into the system, okay? So, I'm going to make that, and also maybe permits people who get the permits to say, "Listen, you guys got to make sure to keep, keep up the litter," you know, "keep the parks clean." So, that's, that's only the first part. My second part is that I need to get some relief from you guys from that place next door. I live right next to the Cultural Arts Building, and I know you're doing something with creating a building on Atlantic, but, you know, I can't take it there with the drums. Who's running, allowing those drums and that music? Who's okaying it? The city's okaying. Who's running the city? You guys are running the city, right? So, somebody has to say, "Look, we got a guy next door. I just paid my taxes, $2,500." Now, I got an apartment upstairs that's empty. Two or three tenants, I've mentioned to about the noise, you know, where they have drums. You know what they say? "I'm sorry, I don't want to rent." I'm going to pass on it. Now, I've never been late more than once paying my taxes. But if I can't rent that apartment, I'm not going to be able to pay my taxes. I don't make that much money, okay? And that's a problem. That is a real problem for me, knowing now that people who come to look at the apartment saying, "What's going on next door?" We need, for me, I'm going to ask you to give me some relief and get rid of the musicals, get rid of the drums. That place was not meant. It was a library since I was a little boy. I've gone along with you guys to say, "Okay, it's going to change." I know you've made some, some progress in buying a building, but at this time, if we look at that schedule, and Arthur, thank you very much for getting after that knucklehead who doesn't want to do his job, Mr. Leosi.
Yes, sir.
Okay? He's an arrogant man who is just a bully, and I'm hoping down the road that you give him his walking papers. Okay, I got a schedule here. September, October, November, and what does it say about musicals and loud events? If you live next to a neighbor who had a loud event, what would you do? You say, "Hey, you can't have this." Once in a while, I think I've been very, very tolerant, but I'm asking you to eliminate the musicals, eliminate the drums. Is, it resonates. From between 8 o'clock to 10:30, that event this last, this past weekend was Fri, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and they played those drums. No, fortunately, they didn't have the sound system on. Now, I put my sound system on. Well, I had a radio. I don't want to listen to that. I tried to be accommodating to anything this city has, but there's nothing, there's no soundproofing on those windows. There's no soundproofing on the doors. So, so what? That's the attitude I'm, I'm getting or I've had from the department who handles that. We don't care. I wouldn't do that to my neighbor. I tell my tenants upstairs, "If my television is on too loud or my music, tell me." When I had tenants. Please, please, please.
Paul, your five minutes is up, but I'm-
Eventually, they're going to move to a stage three, and this is the new rule they got.
Okay. I, I need your help.
We're going to-
Mr. Costa-
Have to call a private meeting with-
No, this is the-
Okay, Paul, this is the new rules of the game.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Give it to you later.
I know my five minutes is up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Let's have a meeting, please. Let's call Mr. Leosi and see what we can do here. Thank you. Sir?
Charles McCalliff, 119 Dorchester Road, Hackensack, New Jersey. I have a hearing problem, so those drums wouldn't have bothered me playing. I live next door to that place.
Want to buy my house?
For four years, I listened to it as a councilman, so I've heard it now for another two. The passing of Ernie Keighley was terrible on his family. More so, it was terrible on the city of Hackensack because Ernie used to handle all of our veterans' recognition programs. Now, I don't know if you've done anything about that, but we have Veterans' Day coming up in November, you know, and I, I know you people have been busy. Boy, you got three cops here tonight. You don't have that many, you know, but I wasn't going to raise any hell tonight anyway, you know, because of the state law, the law itself. But I think that you should really look into, I know the American Legion, Ernie was representing the American Legion, who was doing the coordination, you know, for the people with the wreaths and so on and so forth. So, I know you have a full plate, but that November 11th rolls around real quick, and you should really look into it. That's all I have to say tonight, except am I going to be able to get out of here? You got three Hackensacks finest here.
Chuck, I want to thank you for that because you're right. We have been busy, and I haven't really thought about that, but that needs to continue, and we'll reach out to someone and make sure that this tradition continues.
That's all.
And I'm taking care of it. Absolutely. Thank you.
Have a good night. Kathy DeSalle was doing a fine job with the plants here in the, in the chambers where she's been taking care of them and picking them and plucking them.
Thank you, Chuck.
Outside, she's been doing some weeding, too.
Steve Gilbert, 304 Clinton Place, just a few items. First, again, you know, a recognition of Mr. Costa because even more so than a city manager, I think you should get the honorary Fire Chief Award because you really stepped into a third-alarm fire, and your job was probably more so extinguishing them than, than being a city manager at times. And again, a thank you to Mr. Costa. If he hasn't advised you as of yet, he has given permission. The Rotary will be doing a food drive for the month of October 15th to November 15th, and a basket will be in City Hall Lobby. And I haven't sprung this on him yet, so, Mr. Trost, get ready for my email, I guess. If that goes well, we'll also be doing a toy drive from November 15th to December 15th, so I will reach out to Mr. Trost on that one, and I would assume and hope that that will not be an issue, provided that this goes well. And a thank you to Mr. Mangan because he's been very helpful on a few emails that I've sent him, and he's been very responsive. Mr. Sims, real quick. Last time I spoke at this meeting, I followed Mr. Salkin as he had indicated a few things about, you know, your role as police commissioner and having the business cards, et cetera, and I asked you specifically if you had ever given a PBA card to anybody that had your name on it as a police officer, and you had said no, and I told you that I would come back. Just if, Mr. Costa, if you could pass that up. There's only one other David Sims that's in law enforcement. I guess I would say there's only one David Sims that's in law enforcement in the state of New Jersey. He's not a member of Local 134. I'm kind of confused why Local 134 was the one that was chosen, but that chicken scratch speaks for itself, and I hope that that's the only one that's out there. That's that issue, Costa, Mangan. You know, everyone knows the expression, you know, Hackensack's finest, Hackensack's bravest. Some of the guys that get lost in the shuffle there are our Parks, DPW, and sanitation. Sometimes they don't get the recognition that they deserve, but they are among the hardest-working guys in this city, and they are doing a great job. And I would only hope that the reports that are coming out about the threats and the intimidation and the harassment are not true, not just because they deserve a hospitable working environment, but because we have enough issues in this town in terms of employment. I want to just put it to rest. Very direct and specific question. Do these guys have anything to worry about? Has the council had any conversation regarding the privatization of Parks, DPW, or the Sanitation Department?
I wouldn't answer that, Mr. Governor, because it's, it's a personnel issue.
That would be a personnel issue. However, you know, would that not show up as something that you've discussed at a council meeting? Would that not be on the agenda?
We've never discussed it at a council meeting in, in public, no.
Okay, so has there been private conversation between council members regarding the privatization of services?
I won't go into what happens in that back room and what we discuss. I'm sorry. It's a personal issue, personnel.
So, you're going to allow whatever threats that are out there to continue to be an issue for these sanitation, Parks, and DPW workers that have to come to work under the threat that in the winter their job is gone?
No, I'm not going to allow-
Then put the rumors to rest. Have you discussed, are you considering, the privatization of those departments?
I'm not going to go into discussion about any discussion that happens in that back room. I'm sorry. It would be improper. Thank you.
I guess there is some truth to those rumors, then. Miss, Resolution 345-14, tonight, I just want some clarification. Are we buying four or eight Tahos?
I think it's four.
Yeah, because the resolution said four, but then at the very end it said eight. I guess it was a typo, but just if you guys want to correct that or maybe revote on it next time if that's necessary. But I just wanted to mention that one for you guys. And then, Ms. Greenman, how are you doing on producing that email? You have until tomorrow. Have you found that yet? You haven't found that one yet, okay. So, I guess I'll address that tomorrow when I get to denial, but I've got the whole stack of them. I've got all of them, and I'm just going to keep asking for very specific emails. So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to make myself available. I'll wait after the council meeting. I don't know if maybe it's a tech issue. If you have an iPhone or something, I'll be happy to go through and show you how to find those emails. Okay, I'll bring you all of them then. I'll, you know what I'll do? I'll produce them for you when I have to sue the city for the documents, and that's going to be on you. That's, that, you know, that, that's going to be on you because that's, that's going to be the next step. I wouldn't want to produce the emails if I were you either. However, it's the law, and you have to do it. And do you want to be, I'm going to ask you two, two, two specific questions regarding what's in these emails. Do you want to be the mayor, and do you think that Mr. LaBross is ill-suited to be the mayor?
I'm not going to respond to it.
Okay, because your emails speak for themselves, so I'll bring those out. Okay, because your emails speak for themselves, so I'll bring those out at the, at the appropriate time. But, Mr. Morris, last time I mentioned it to you, I really hope that you had that conversation with Mrs. Greenman about Oprah and what she has to comply with when it comes to Oprah.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mayor, if I could just, Joe, Mr. Gilbert's correct, Resolution 345-14 toward the end should say four Tahos, not eight. Do we have to vote again, or can we just make a correction?
I think, I think that's just, it's a scriptur error, as long as, as everyone's clear that it's, it's four Tahos, and the council's clear that that's what they voted on, I don't, do not believe you have to revote on it.
If we could get eight for that price, so I'll take it.
Hey, you finished?
Yeah.
It's Jerry Lombardo, chairman of the Main Street Business Alliance in, in town. Just publicly wanted to thank Mr. Costa for stepping in at a very tough time. I represent, excuse me, the business community, which is roughly 350 businesses and properties in the city of Hackensack, and, and we would be remiss if not getting it on the record of, of how the man stepped up at a big time. He's very, very responsive. Anytime I've ever asked him for something, not only do I get an answer, but I get an answer sometimes that day or that hour. Very accessible by the phone. And from my heart, I just want to thank you so much for all the stuff you've done for the city, and the business community thanks you. As for Mr. Trost, congratulate you and welcome you to the city. The Upper Main Alliance, which has been in business or in existence since around 2000, has been working very hard on the downtown. We're encouraged that you have a planning background, and we look forward to working with you and doing anything to move forward the city of Hackensack, and we stand ready to work with, with you and, and the existing council to, to get things done as we go forward. But just wanted to welcome the new city manager and say goodbye to Art, but I hope Art's gonna stay and be very involved in, in a lot of things, because he's the number one guy there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tommy Ellis, I'm 67 Poplar Avenue, Hackensack. I sat there the last couple meetings, and I heard what was going on, parts, bits and pieces about Mr. Sims, David. But what Mr. Salkin left out was back during his tenure, one of the councilmen, Roger Matei, ran around with the police, rode in the police cars, acted as what everybody kind of considered a police commissioner. So I think that, from what I'm hearing, you know, like I said, I didn't hear the whole story, but I'm hearing a lot of things that they're, they're coming down on him for, but so far, what I heard doesn't amount to what Roger Matei was doing at the time. So I kind of feel bad that he's getting such a hard time, you know, with, you know, what I'm hearing. There is no police commissioner, it was always like, kind of, sort of like a joke, you called him police commissioner because he was liaison to the police department, but he truly had no title as a commissioner or any influence in the police department. He was there to see, you know, how it was running, if it was running properly, and if there were any issues. And so far, from what I heard of people on the street, that's, that's all that I've seen David involved in. I don't know anything further than that, if anybody has anything else, you know, that remains to be seen. The other things I wanted to speak about is revenue for the city. If I'm not mistaken, a lot of these ordinances were designed for multiple reasons, some safety of people and some revenue for the city. Now, I walk around the city, I go on a three-mile walk at night, and I see things that just aren't being taken care of. Somebody's got a job to do it, somebody's not doing it, which means somebody's taking a paycheck for not doing work. Sidewalks are just emulsified, they're just crushed into the ground, and we're tripping on them every time we walk. Clinton Place is one area, 106 Claritin is on the corner of Clinton. Up between Prospect and Summit is another one, like four or five of them. In between Claritin and North Prospect, on, on the north side of Clinton Place. Then I see, we're ducking to get under trees as we're walking down the sidewalk. The trees are planted, and you got lower branches that aren't being trimmed up. That's tree crew. Somebody should be riding around seeing these things, and somebody should be taking care of it. One of the biggest thorns in the side, and when I was a police officer, it was a thorn in the side, because we were not allowed to take care of it, was the parking around the schools. I don't believe in a civilized society that we have to deal with these parents that just don't want to obey the law. We'd go out and we'd do click of the ticket, we go out and do parking violations and everything else, but we allow these parents to just take over our, our, our city in the mornings and the afternoons. It's, it's disgraceful what's going on, and I don't understand how we give out tickets for everything else, and we, and we just look the other way on these parents. The crossing guards are nearly getting run over by these people. And on Sundays, another problem. If it isn't the, the parents, it's the churches. The churches have free rein to park anyplace they want. They park in people's driveways, they park in no parking zones, they double park and leave the car in the middle of the street at Fairmount and Grand Avenue. It's asking for a problem, because when there's a major accident, the people are gonna come and sue the police department and the city because they're not enforcing their laws. You gotta enforce the laws, and if, if people, you get ministers that come down from the church, sorry, you gotta obey the laws. So you walk a block, you walk two blocks. It's healthy, it's good for you, but it's safer for someone else. Johnson Park, we paid a lot of money, a lot of money to plant grass down there. The soccer field doesn't have a problem with being worn out, now the grass does, because they're not playing soccer in the soccer fields. They're playing in, in the area that cost us thousands and thousands of dollars, and nobody sees it, and nobody is stopping and saying, uh-uh, that's not the ball field, you can't play there. It's a lot of money and a lot of time that these, these DPW workers took to do their job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Art, luck in the future, and congratulations.
Good evening, Kathleen Saville. I want to thank Art Costa for all his help throughout the years, not just recently. You inherited a big mess, came, stepped up to the plate, and I thank you for everything, and your secretary. I mean, you know, it was, it was a pleasure working with you. And I want to welcome my new, my new city manager, Mr. Trost, and I'm sure he's gonna do a great job, he's got a great background, and I'm looking forward to, to working with him. The place is civil tonight, and because the board of ed people are missing. Last night was, was a joke, I mean, it was, it was embarrassing. One of the, one of the people, persons who came to the meeting for the first time, he goes, is it always like this? And, and it is, it's just, it's just very embarrassing, and Sissy, Sissy echoed the same thing. She brought children here to see how government works, and that's a bunch of crazy people. It was like a reality TV show, this has got to stop. The board of ed people, if they want to be productive, and if they want to offer anything, if they want to come here, they have to come here to bring something to us. They can't just come here and continually mock what, what you're doing and, and criticize. And I'm gonna start criticizing them, they have a big problem, they have to do their homework, they have so many problems at, in the board of ed. I think they, when their house is perfect, then come here and, and pick on this group. And basically, it's, it's the morning, and we got, Regina and I got ahold of Mr. Nunamak in the back and told him how bad all the schools are in the morning. It's complete chaos, the mothers have no, they do not obey any rules, you have people, we had, somebody get hit at a Fairmount, they, they park in front of people's driveways, and, and they resent when the person comes out and tells them they can't do it. And we're looking forward to working with them. If they want to come in and sit down, I will have a committee, we'll work, anybody that wants to join, police department and whatever, to work with them to get something that's going on, to, to have, to make this right in the morning. The immediate things are this, this dysfunctional property maintenance department, it's dysfunctional. They don't, they don't give out, they don't give out any kind of property maintenance violations that they should. Case in point, Polyfy Towing, and I see our friend is here. That, that location should have never gotten to be that way, and it did because of one person who neglected to do his job. And Al Berli, and, and everybody knows he's not one of my favorites. He neglected to do his job all through the years, and he made that location get like it did, because he didn't do his job, and it should have been prevented, it was, it's a disaster. And all over Hackensack, the same thing happens. You tell them, he says he's going to do it, and he doesn't do it. It's dysfunctional, and they, it makes, and I'm embarrassed to, to see what's going on there, and it just, it's just, it's just really bad. The other department we need help in is the health department. We lost the head person there, it's gonna be a liability, we need professional people, we don't need temporary people, we need people who know the rules, we don't, we shouldn't be breaking anybody in, we should have people that, that know the rules. We do a lot of paperwork, those girls go crazy in that office, they do births, they do deaths, we do the Hackensack medical, everything that happens in Hackensack medical, we are responsible for recording and taking care of. And they need, they need professional help, and we're a big city, we need to hire professional people in that area. Okay, property maintenance. I, I too mentioned it last night about David, because I remember when Roger Matei used to ride shotgun in the police cars, and it was wrong. And David is the liaison between the police department and the, and the board of, the mayor and council, so therefore, whatever title they did give him, it happened in the past that, that Roger Matei messed up. Also, people are neglecting to, to remember that both Leo and David, and I said this a million times, have been involved with recreation since the 90s, consecutively, every year. So I don't want to hear other council members that did one little thing or whatever. They've been consecutively involved all these years, and we have to thank both of them, David for saving Carver Park, because he's been involved with it forever and takes care of it, and Leo for doing Johnson Park, who, people destroy everything, and if he wasn't there, the, the gates get broken. They, they tear the goalposts down, and he's been, he's been like managing it forever. So I really, you know, I want to thank them throughout the years. Same thing, what else? Oh, and, and Chuck, Memorial Day was taken care, we do miss Ernie a lot, but they did do Memorial Day, that's done down by me, and we are gonna do Veterans' Day, it's done through the rec, and like I said, we all missed Ernie because he, he took, he did it forever, but those, those two days will be, will be continued, and the DPW works, works with them, you know, everybody has their own little job, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna be forgotten, but like I said, we, Ernie was, was, was an asset to this community, and we do miss him. That's about it, and I thank you, and I welcome Mr. Trost.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Vito Bernetti, 99 Cedar Avenue. I'm here to ask for help from the city council. A little background, on Tuesday, January 28th, 2014, there was a water main break and a sewer overflow on the intersection of Cedar and Herman. It created extensive property damage in at least four to five property owners. I'm here tonight to speak about three of us. Myself, Joyce Landry of 103 Cedar, and Frank Betetto of 98 Cedar. We sustained damages of approximately $75,000. Mine personally was about $14,500. We were denied, we filed claims with our private insurance, denied, we filed a claim with United Water, who is the, is the owner and the responsive, and the responsible party for the maintenance of the water lines. Through their Travelers Insurance, we were denied coverage. We did meet with city officials in March, Mr. Costa was there. At that time, city manager Retino also attended, and it was also someone from the Department of Public Works. We then filed our notices of claim under Title 59, because we weren't getting any satisfaction, we weren't getting any answers. We then subsequently filed two Oprah requests, seeing if we could get the information from the city. Unfortunately, both, one in March and one in August, were woefully inadequate. We never received a proper explanation. One, of whether there are any repairs in and around our neighborhood, and specifically the intersection of Cedar and Herman, where the water main broke for that, for, for at least four or five years. Two, reports or memos from any city agency regarding the specific sewer problem that occurred on January 28th. There were, that day, there were representatives from the police department, fire department, building department, Department of Public Works, I think also from the city managers and from the mayor's office. And finally, and the most glaring, was the omission from United Water. We've asked United Water why they feel they have no responsibility. Now, I understand the difference, under Title 59, Hackensack is a public utility, and even though United Water is a private entity, it seems to be able to assume or claim coverage, that they have no legal liability for this action. However, I'm here to talk about responsibility. No one has ever denied neither the city or United Water that they were responsible. United Water is responsible because they own the water lines, they maintain the water lines, and the city is responsible for the sewer lines. What we think happened, but we never received an official explanation, was that there was a break in the water line, it overflowed to such an extent, it overflowed into the sewer line, the sewer line then backed up and pushed sewage into all of our properties. What we want now is some type of help from the city council. Like I said, we've already filed two Oprah requests. If necessary, obviously, we're gonna have to go to court, or we may be have to sue the city for this, which we'd like to avoid. What we want to know from United Water, since they're the ones who are balking at providing any information, is were they aware of any prior leaks or at that location? Was that subject main, that, that water main previously repaired by United Water? And did they have any knowledge that that main was at risk to break or leak? What we're asking now is for you to help us in one of three ways. One, again, we understand what the legal liabilities are, but we're asking you, as the city council, to take consideration for us, we're residents, we pay our taxes, we're a good property owner. One, that you would consider compensating the property owners for that $75,000. We have made claims with your insurance agents, they have the full breakdown photographs and everything else. Two, and most importantly, to get access to this internal report from United Water. They are working for the city of Hackensack, we're asking for this internal report, which is what Mr. Terranova, who is the representative who has been talking to or communicating with us, that he has, or that United Water has no liability. I'm quoting from a email that's dated March 20th, based, excuse me, based on its investigation, Travelers determined that United Water, New Jersey, was not negligent either as to the occurrences of the water break or its response there, too. Well, like I said, two Oprah requests, and we've never seen the report. I would assume the city of Hackensack would like to see this report. It would make sense, because that way you could put to rest, was there a problem, was there prior knowledge, so that we know where we stand, as opposed to having go through litigation and litigation and litigation. So we're asking you to please get that information from United Water. Also, we're asking for any reports that any of your city agencies, the only thing we got was a one-line report, or not even a report, just an acknowledgement that the police department were there, but we heard no reports from Public Works, fire, building, anything. And we were told, because representatives of the fire department, building department, and police department came into each of our individual houses and told us, one, shut down electricity, because there's water in the house and you could have a problem, and shut down the water until this is under control. And third, we're asking if you're not willing to compensate us, which I really think you should seriously consider it, it's not a lot of money, you certainly have more than enough claims against you, unfortunately, by different people that are litigating against you. Get this internal report from United Water. And three, if they do not do it, would you consider the city of Hackensack joining us and suing United Water to get the information? One last thing I would like to bring, because there seems to be somewhat of a tacit acknowledging... One last thing I would like to bring, because there seems to be somewhat of a tacit acknowledgement by United Water, that something is wrong with the way that they are maintaining their water system. There was an article in The Record in June of 2014, and it was basically, I'm going to quote now from this article, it's entitled-
Mr. Bernetti, you're, excuse me, Mr. Bernetti, you gotta wrap it up quick. You're past your five minutes. Thank you.
Basically, it's an article stating that United Water is about to spend over $220 million to replace leaky water mains and broke, and to, to basically prevent further breaks in their water lines. They were there with United States Senator Bob Menendez and Representative Bill Paschrell. Basically, United Water is acknowledging that not just our individual claim, but they know that their infrastructure is probably close to over 100 years old, and that they need now to start replacing it. Well, they should have done this a while ago. Right now, each of our individual water bills is being charged money for this.
Mr. Bernetti, there's, I have to, I have to stop because you're about seven minutes. All right, we give five. All right, thank you, sir.
If you'd like to get in touch with me, I can get-
Can you give, can you please give your contact, Mr. Bernetti, please give your contact information to Mr. Costa, make sure I get it, please. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Serrano Keith Baldio. My address is 201 Rochelle Avenue, Rochelle Park, 07662. I want to first talk about Steve. I own a New Jersey Pulse newspaper, and I go to the different cities looking for people. That's important. When I first met Steve, talking up here, he was a little bit, I didn't know how to get him. But after a while, I see him come up with a suit. He was very aggressive all over the place. But now he's starting to make sense out of what he's saying. When I hear about backroom deals, and he's talking about stuff like that, and bringing up things that's going on in the city, I start paying attention to people like that.
Mr. Serrato, we go into closed session, not to make deals, but to discuss business that we need to discuss in private. I don't want to call them backroom deals, okay?
Mr. Mayor, may I finish, and then you can comment after my five minutes, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So when I saw what happened here tonight, it makes me wonder what's going on behind there, because you refused to answer him. And it's my job to find out. It's not really Steve, he's a public person, I'm the media. And there's also a video that Steve posted of one of your council members yelling and screaming and being disruptive in the meeting. And now you're up there, and you're telling people they can't even talk really loud, or even two minutes after. So that's, that's a shame. And so I'm going to switch to Al Borelli, and find out why is he still working for the city. You see, Al Borelli went, when I was investigating Parafly Towing, and lied to a judge about seven tickets that that property was fixed, and actually it was cured from being a junkyard. And I filed criminal charges against Al Borelli, and went to the Supreme Court. But the reason he got away is because the judge says, even though he lied, he never put his hand up and swore under oath to what he saw. So he had Judge Denisor, I think his name is, dismiss these seven tickets. And I have video and photo of Al Borelli going back and seeing the same violations and walking away. And that's why I filed a criminal charges. This year, he filed six more charges because of my investigation to say, which proves it was never fixed. And those tickets should have never been favored to Parafly Towing. And last week, I was actually injured, and I couldn't be in the court, and I found out the other six tickets were dismissed. So either we have a corrupt judge, or we have a corrupt something going on in that courtroom. Because if any one of these people here parked illegally, and they got seven tickets, and they went before Judge Denisor, and said, "Look, I moved the car now, dismissed my tickets," that's not going to happen. So why did it happen for Parafly Towing? He's made about $1.5 million on that property, since for 10 years, he's had it illegally because you never had a contract with him. And paid you back $24,000 after making almost $1.5 million. So it's a drop in the bucket, that you've made him walk away so easily. So he's got all these tickets fixed, and in another investigation, he parks his truck illegally on the side streets. And when the director was here, I told him I have photos of your cops coming, standing there, waiting for the time to run out, and not ticketing him. Well, the director didn't want to see my timestamp videos, so he wanted to see an actual video. So I did a video. I had commercial tiles called the Police Department. And we sat there, and we waited, and we videotaped the whole thing. And nobody showed up to ticket this guy. So somebody's playing him favor in the city. So I've decided that I'm going to report that judge, and find out why he dismissed the first seven tickets last year, the second six tickets this year, and not, and everybody else have to pay their tickets. Why is he walked away $1.5 million on that property that belongs to the people and paid a $24 fine? Something is wrong here. So that's when I heard backroom deals, I decided I was going to say something. And so you have to look at Al Borelli. Why is he letting people get away? You know, somebody came up here and says, "Well, you know, you guys made all these laws," and the thing is enforcement. If you don't enforce, Al Borelli was responsible for enforcing that law. I went to him, I recorded him saying to me, "It's not, he's just an employee. He's taking directions." It's on tape. Who are you taking directions from, that you can't go back and ticket this guy and shut him down? Who are you taking directions? You are the enforcement agent. So now, you took away the property from him, which is fine. You put meters up on two of them. Two weeks I've been watching these meters. No money, nothing. Today, I photographed two cars, and all these meters you put up on that property there, it's expired. Nobody's making any money. If you made $3, you're lucky. When you could have taken that property and given it to the businesses around it, and charged them at least $1,500 a month and up, they would have paid it. So you made $3, if at all. So those meters that you put up there is a waste of time. I'm a businessman. Where's the business sense? And the question that I have for you today is the remaining property that is sitting there, what are you going to do about it? Because nobody's using it, and you can make money with it. So if you can tell me what's happening to at least that property, and I'll take care of the rest later on.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Your five minutes is up. Thank you. I'll answer, I'll answer your question after the public spoken. Thank you.
Good evening. Lance Stewart.
Good evening, Lance.
Hackensack. I did email the city manager regarding the meeting dates. And I was just at the Board of Education meeting. And it's kind of hard to come to both when they're on the same night. Now, I know last year and the year before, we had this issue. And Mark Stein, who was on that prior council eight years ago, who changed the city council meetings to Tuesday, told me the problem was the city council changed it to Tuesday, and that I should speak to the city council, which is ridiculous. But anyway, when, two years ago, after complaining, they did change the meetings to Monday. Now they switched them back to Tuesday, and his response is, "Go talk to the council." They changed their date. So I just think that maybe you can get with them and work out something so that citizens can go to both. And because they're putting 10 board members over the interest of this entire community. So if you could do that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Regina De Pasco, Parker Avenue. Art, thank you, thank you. You have been, you stepped in, stepped up. You have been great, fabulous-
Thank you.
-from day one. And the branches got picked up today.
Thanks.
Thank you.
They'll sweep tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll see. And Mr. Trost, good luck.
Thank you. I hope we can all play nice, we can all work together, and do the right thing. It takes everybody a little give and take. And I'm hoping that this can, I see everybody voted to approve, Mr. Trost. So I'm hoping everybody's on board, and I'm hoping, I am the eternal optimist, I'm hoping things will smooth out, and everybody, like I said, will play, play nice and do the right thing. But there's, you know, a few things left over that have to be fixed, things that have to be straightened out. And hopefully, again, those parties will do the right thing, and will move forward. We don't need any more holding us back. I had mentioned last night about the joint Board of Ed and Council meeting. I hope that, actually, Mr. Nunnamacher knew nothing about it. I think it was the previous superintendent that, and the previous council that discussed that. This group might, might go for it. This way, they don't have to sit out there, right? And it is rather quiet tonight without them. It really is. Rather calm, actually. The SRO, who's responsible for keep making sure we get the money? Would that be you, Mr. Mangan? Because we didn't get money at one point, so.
We have been.
Okay, we have been, and we will continue to. Okay, I just have to ask. Mr. McCollough left, I think, but we had, at the Elks, Ernie Kaye, he was, was an Elk and a great member of our lodge also, and we had discussed about November 11th. Anything, could you keep us posted, whatever plans are made, if you need anything? The Elks absolutely want to be involved in that. Just one, one minor thing. So please don't let us get sued, Mrs. Greenman. The emails do exist. Are they in your iPhone, in your cloud? Please, I, they're my emails. They're emails from me. I know they exist. If you deleted them, I don't know why, but they are there. Please, please, can you save us a little bit of money? Can you do the right thing? Show good faith that you are interested in doing what is right for the city, because they do exist. They're like the M&amp;M's. They are really there. They do exist. Mrs. Greenman, you have nothing to say to me as a resident of the City of Hackensack? Never mind that you think I stalk you, whatever, whatever, because I show up in public places. How dare I? Okay, I'm asking you to do the right thing, if you know how to do that.
Anybody else in the public like to speak?
Mary Gilbert, 304 Clinton Place. I normally don't like to get up, and I don't like to speak publicly, but I did have to get up tonight on a couple of comments that were made. Mr. Salkin's not here in the room tonight, and Mr. Elias got up and spoke regarding Mr. Sims and former deputy mayor, what was, what was his name? I can't think of the name.
Mr. Matei.
Matei, yes. If you go back, Tommy, and look at the tapes, Rick Salkin spoke, he started with Matei, and he did the comparison there. So go back and look at the tape. He didn't neglect, mention Matei. And Kathy Sello, you spoke tonight about one little thing that Johnny, and I'm assuming Melphy, one little thing that they did, and what these guys have been involved with years-
Since the 90s.
But, no, no, that's not true. That's totally not true. Mike Melphy's still very much involved with baseball, and-
There's no, Mrs. Gilbert, no back and forth.
And, and the rec program, and the high school wrestling team, as well as, Johnny, have you given it up, or are you still involved?
No, I'm just a trustee, at a trustee level.
But, but, but the point is, there's, they were gentlemen. My boys worked under both Melphy and, and John. And they were gentlemen. They never bullied anybody in the city. Mike used to go down to the field constantly, and we never got complaints about the workers down in the DPW or, or the Parks Commission being bullied. It's about bullying, and that's what's going on now, and that's what needs to stop. I, I read those articles, and I'm appalled.
Who was making the articles? Your son?
Yeah, my son.
Okay, so tomorrow-
Wait, wait a minute.
No back and forth.
I have my five minutes, and you'll have your closing statements.
I'm not going to allow any back and forth. You can have your, let her have her five minutes, sir.
I'm sure you'll have your closing statements, where nobody can go back at you. So we'll have to come back in two weeks. Right?
Go ahead, Mrs. Gilbert.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I, I don't want to say anymore. You, you know what you're doing, and it needs to stop.
Can I say something?
No, no.
Afterwards, afterwards.
When I'm done. When you have your closing statements, then you can say something, okay? It's got to stop. It's going on. You know it goes on, and it's got to stop. There's something called being a gentleman, and that's not what's happening in the city now.
Bruce Metzler, Washington Avenue, Hackensack. I'm complaining again about the block of Munaki Road between Washington Avenue and Hudson Street, where people are complaining to me now even about possibly getting killed there. You looked at it, Leo? You said there's a problem.
I mentioned to him that he went to look at it.
But what can be done about it? Something has to be done.
What can he do? He don't know. He don't have no answer.
I mean, people are walking in the street because there's no place to walk. There should be a sidewalk there. There should be some safe area for people to walk. Children are coming to school down that street. You don't have a choice. You have to walk on that one little block. And I wish everybody would take a tour and really look at it, and try to walk there. It is dangerous. And nobody, I mean, I've been singing this song for many, many years, and nobody does anything about it. And until someone really gets killed or seriously hurt, I'm afraid that's the way it's going to sit. And it's a shame because it's not right. You look at me with doubt. This is a little narrow place to walk between the fence and the road. The cars are right on top of you. There's no area of safety between you and the cars.
Mr. Costa, tomorrow, can you speak with Mr. Trost on this?
Yes, I will.
Bring him up to speed on this, and where we are, and with Mr. Flanagan, where we're at with this, so we can see if he answers.
Okay.
We'll look into it, Mr. Pasternak. I'll take your-
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, anybody, Mr. Pataglia?
Yes. First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming, and thank you all again for everything you do for us, and welcome, David, as the city manager. Let's talk about Johnson Park. I invite anybody tomorrow, 11 o'clock, in Johnson Park, including the person from the record, and we will talk over there. I will show you everything that I do over there, all the improvement, and what I have to do to try to keep the park in the condition that it is. Okay? That's all. Thank you for coming. Anybody, 11 o'clock, Johnson Park. I've been doing this for almost 35 years, and this is not making any sense. Okay?
Did you finish, Leo?
Yeah, I finished.
I'd like to take my couple of minutes tonight to talk about one of the very important ordinances that were final, that were adopted tonight, and it's finalization tonight, second hearing. And that is the, the bond that we are adopting to pay for the tax appeals, that, that tax appeals that have been out here for, since 2005 and 2006, many of them. You know, this is a problem. This is something that existed in the city. This is a debt that had to be resolved, and it had to be resolved in a way that had the least impact on our residents. All right? We were very happy to hear this week, this past Wednesday, for the city to, to be able to borrow money, to be able to authorize and bond money to pay things like tax appeals. They need to get approval from the state. The state has an agency called the Local Finance Board, and that Local Finance Board is part of an organization called the Division of Local Government Services. And that division kind of is, you know, based out of Trenton, part of the state, and they're kind of the overseers of all the municipalities. So for the city to be able to obtain that bond, they have to look very specifically at the financial health of the city and the financial management of the city, and give us what they deem to be the most responsible mechanism for bonding and satisfying that criteria. We asked for a term of seven years, which was the longest term we could ask for. We asked for a term of seven years, which was the longest term we could ask for, which is the most beneficial to our residents, the least impact on our residents. And we were unanimously granted that approval this past Wednesday, which is very good news for the city. I'm going to give up my couple of minutes of speaking to just read you one small paragraph from a letter that was written to the city by the director of the Division of Local Government Services. His words, "When reviewing such applications, the board considers what good-faith steps are being taken to address the underlying problems that led to the need for financing. In the case of Hackensack, we recognize that the city is appropriately moving forward with efforts to modernize assessments such that they are accurate and more defensible in the face of appeals. We also recognize that Hackensack is taking steps to provide for more timely payment of tax appeal settlements, which had not been done under a prior administration. When reviewing applications to finance the impact of tax appeals, the board also inquires as to what steps are being taken to minimize the extent of financing. In the case of Hackensack, we recognize that the current administration has taken significant steps to achieve efficiencies that save taxpayers money." These are the words from the director of the Division of Local Government Services. Everyone in this town should feel proud to have such comments made about our city. I personally am proud. The entire council is proud. And we should all feel proud to have such kind and nice words said about the city. And I felt it was worth it to share with you tonight. Thanks for coming, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Sims.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We heard you, good and bad, and with the representatives from the parks and sanitation. Me personally, if I ever offended you or anything, I apologize. Art, I want to thank you for everything, and Mr. Trost, thank you.
Mrs., Ms. Greenman, sorry.
Thank you for coming. Welcome to the city manager.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Serrbo still here? That's why he didn't get his answers last time. He left. I was right down, but he's always gone. Okay. We're a city, and unfortunately, we have to have buses using Spring Valley Road. I don't know what solution there could possibly be to stop New Jersey Transit from using our roads. That's a tough one. But it's there. Litter. We're a big city, a city of 43,000 people. We probably swell to about $120,000, $120,000 people every day, between the hospital and county, people in and out. A lot of that litter is probably from people that don't live here. I'd like to think it's mostly from them, but I'm sure some of us are doing it too. It's something we need to address as a city. We do do cleanup twice a year. We do a cleanup program for the parks and certain areas around town, which is very important, and it actually helps quite a bit. He had asked about the hospital. Yes, we are working very closely with the hospital on some issues to try and resolve it, and that's moving forward. Five minutes. Now we're keeping it five minutes. We're not going to 10, all right? Mr. Encalcatara is still here. I'm going to call Mr. Leosian, see what we can do. I mean, you know, even if we have to use a middle school or something, or one of the school auditoriums. I agree. We can, we'll work on it, all right? Mr. Recoliff has left. I want to thank Al Dib. This Lot C thing was like, you know, finding a needle in a haystack. That must have been unbelievable. And you probably, your mouth probably dropped when you found that information. But this information could save the city considerable money in the form of time by being able to get rid of this property much quicker than we thought we could, by waiting for the state to do something. So kudos to you, Al. Great. Thank you. Don't forget the Main Street Festival is on 27th, it's Saturday. It's a great festival. Come out. The weather's nice. You get great food. It's, you know, Hackensack, we're a diverse city. You get to experience a lot of diversity. Great band is playing. For you old timers around my age, the Average White Band, which was a great rhythm and blues band from the mid-'70s, will be playing. Sissy's left, so I can't address her. Where are we? Mr. Serrano, a couple of things. It would be improper for any council to come out. The reason you go into closed session is so that you can speak in private, because there are certain things that need to be discussed in private that can't be public.
You have to say what you're discussing in private?
Okay. It's, nobody said we discussed it in private. I said, "I'm not discussing anything that came out of the back room." Now, I don't believe you said the words "backroom deal," you know.
I did not.
Well, Mr. Serrano said you said the words "backroom deal." So, you know, the way some of us use that podium, if it's said there, it's true, okay? So I didn't hear you say it, but he's saying you said. I just want to make that clear while you're here. We would never disclose what goes on in that back room here. There's a reason for that. And that doesn't make it, is it a backroom deal? No, it's in the back room, and that's where we discuss private matters of litigation and personnel issues and stuff like that. The sidewalks, Tommy, well, you know, if you could give us, give the city manager some information on that, and we'll see if we need to address it. Same with the trees, and I can't remember the last name. Mrs. Ruth. We'll get Flanagan over there again, look and see what we can do with that situation. You know, we just, there might not be an easy fix there. If it's somebody's property, and you need to put a sidewalk, it doesn't mean just, you know, sometimes an issue just taking somebody's property and putting a sidewalk up, you know, that could be a conflict. Where else are we here? Sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit. Mr. Brunetti is still here. I am familiar with this. I am a close personal friend, actually, with Mr. Petto. I know what he went through. I was there the day it was flooding. Wasn't in the houses, but I was on the street, and it was unbelievable amount of water. The new city manager is going to have to become familiar with this case, along with the help from Art. And I don't see any reason why you can't get reports from the departments, such as Fire Department, Police Department, anybody who entered your house, on what they had that day. So we can make sure you get those. We will have to, obviously, sit with United Water. I know we've had conversations with them before, when Mr. Rotino was here. I don't know where it's going to go. There, you know, utilities are tough cookies to deal with. We all know that. But we'll see what we can do, and I promise you that. As far as, back to Mr. Serrano with Mr. Borelli. I mean, I have a hard time, I mean, he made some accusations that we had a corrupt judge or something. You know, I don't think Judge Denis would take that too kindly, but I think that needs to be addressed. If you have an issue, you need to bring that to the proper authorities. And let's go back to Pollo Fly Towing. This council was just new, when this information came to be that they hadn't paid their lease since 2005, I think, 2004, 2002, all right? This council took immediate steps to rectify the situation. Finally, an eviction took place. They left the property, and they gave us a X amount of cash. Now, as far as what we do with that property, yes, we threw some parking meters up there, but that's not the intent of the property forever. We haven't decided what we're doing with that property yet. It may go out, you know, we just haven't decided. So that has to be discussed. But something will be done with that property. But in the meanwhile, we put some parking meters on it, and, you know, $3 is better than no dollars, if that's what it truly is. And this week marked 13 years, the anniversary of 9/11. And it's funny, I saw something about it, somebody's complaining about the school district. I won't say what school district it was, in ours. That he had three children in his school district, different ages, from high school, middle school, elementary school, and not one child was taught one thing about 9/11 during the course of the school day, on 9/11. And I found that hard to believe. So my wife was a teacher. Of course, I came home, and I said, "Did you talk about 9/11 to your kids today?" These are second graders. And she says, "Absolutely, at their level." She, you know, she actually showed a film, and made it as real as she could for them. And I think that's important, because the reason that these events happen, in my opinion, is because of complacency, and we forget so fast, you know, it's our society is a fast-paced society, and, you know, we move along, and you can't forget events like this, ever, ever, ever. And we have to etch it in all of our minds and never forget it. It seems to me like it was yesterday when that happened. Everybody knows exactly where they were. It's like a moment frozen in time. And, you know, prayers to all the people that we lost, and to the people who lost people, and the people who are still suffering from that. And I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. One more quick comment. Comments were made about it was a quiet night. You know what? Yes, the Board of Ed's not here. Do they have the right to come? Yes. We have the right to go to Board of Ed, too. We choose not to, all right? I don't think that's productive for the city. This city needs to start working together, or, you know, it's not going to work, all right? Board of Ed needs to work with us. We need to work with the Board of Ed. And I have no intention or no desire to be going to Board of Ed meetings and creating havoc, and, you know, trying to, you know, snap to what they're trying to do. We could easily do that. We choose not to. There's a certain amount of politics involved. We all know that. And some of those people ran for office. They didn't win. You know, that's, but it's their prerogative to come. They're Americans. We can't stop them, so. With that, I want to wish everybody a safe ride home, and thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, to close.
Offered.
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.